Oh no.
I have nothing to say.
Sure.
He's like, he would. He's been given the death sentence and it's not meaning anything. So it's like, of course, right? And then he said, yeah, that's not my credit. And then people, and then my mother goes, oh honey, yeah, I didn't get it. And then so people, like, all of them, you know, he would be wondering. Like, if you, he, he, he's thinking about all the time.
Yeah, I sent him up, up at the truck camp, one of his best friends was wearing a pair of like.
I don't know.
I, I would predict you were like, you're all like, what is this?
I'm so excited for you. So, hold on. No, I have an idea.
I, I like that because I live on the fifty street as you know. And we just be like, take the Dodge R in the evening, so.
Oh, whatever you have.
We're in the.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, we're. Thank you.
Do you have a pen?
Yeah, I got one. We're, uh, we're, we're building it.
Yeah, right, maybe a couple stacks. Wherever I hurt, she can grip, yes. That's awesome.
We'll be close.
Well, I was gonna talk to you about this, so did you know when they redid the road?
Yeah.
So I, I mullered, it's just that they took bitches. I can't, I can't reach all of it now after the grade, it's like this. I can't, I can't get all the way up there.
Really?
So I'll try to, I don't know who to call.
Okay, let me.
All right, sound good.
Let me, uh.
Well, my, my neighbors, neither one of my neighbors mull it, but I drive it outside. I like to keep it, you know, tucked.
Shoot me a text and try to remember to send it to me.
Oh my gosh, I guess. It's gotta be done right. Why is it so cold in here?
Be cold?
It's in my short shorts.
Short shorts. You should see how short my arms are, I could get away with it. I look like, what's his name? Mustache guy?
Forrest Frank?
No, uh, Magnum P.I. Should do those.
I was gonna say MacGyver next, but.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll come in and protest the board. My appropriate.
I love this board, but by the way, this format is so much, so much easier, user-friendly. I think before it was so janky, like, my first, for a couple of months I started on the board, like, eight years ago.
Look in the D-drive, look in the D-drive.
Oh my gosh.
So I would figure out, like, I didn't.
I cannot wait.
Just go to the, like, join the meeting. And it has the format, I'm like, okay, this is much easier. It's like, I'm like, what? I see the agenda here, I gotta go with it, I was like.
I was, I didn't even.
It's all right there on the left-hand side, you get to scroll it. And everything pops up on the right.
So true.
The biggest challenge with this is just being able to sign it.
Which password is it? Oh yeah, which?
Hey Nicole? Nicole? We're gonna start here in a second. No, that's okay. All right, Trey, you ready for us? What's that? Good?
Okay.
Are you getting everybody in the new one? Or in the regular session?
Good? All right. I'm going to call to order the regular session for August seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Uh, we're gonna move, uh, for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Second.
All right.
You can.
All right, perfect. Just did it. We have a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Uh, do we have any discussion? And then, we're doing a roll call vote with two remote employees, or employees, um, board members? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote, and I'll let Dr. Flansburgh call the vote.
All right, uh, Nicole. Roll call vote for approving the agenda and the consent agenda.
What am I saying?
Aye.
Or you can say nay if you want, but. Okay.
Chad? Amanda? Jason?
Aye.
Oh, both Jasons gave an aye, or Jason and Jason have given an aye. Nathan?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Danae?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. All right.
Years I've never heard that.
Onto item three B, human resource services.
Oh, no, that was consent, that's your consent agenda.
We're, we're all having fun here. All right, fine. Number four. All right. Reports from organizations, uh, we do not have anybody here from the PACT Student Council Representatives. Um, I'm not sure we'll have some next month, with them being back to school, but we look forward to seeing them. Uh, so nothing for there, moving on to.
There was a hand up.
Oh.
Oh, no, my hair, sorry.
Oh, hair.
Oh, I, I think.
I thought we skipped three A, three B.
We, that wasn't the consent agenda.
My own part is.
Yes. I did, I did the same thing with the new layout. Um, so we have nothing for item number four, so it is our pleasure to move to item number five, which is recognitions and retirement. And then, uh, PACT Employee of the Month.
At this time, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Lindman to come join us up front. Mark Lindman is our Employee of the Month, so Mark, we're gonna present you with the certificate, but I also wanna be able to share some things. Dear members of the board, I'm pleased to bring forward for your recognition, Mark Lindman is the July twenty twenty-five Employee of the Month. Mark is our Building and Grounds Lead and has consistently shown a remarkable dedication to maintaining and improving our school's physical environment. His efforts make sure that our facilities are not only clean and functional inside, but also inviting and well-maintained outside. Mark's work ethic is exceptional. He's one of the hardest-working people on our staff, constantly showing initiative, reliability, and a positive attitude. His concern for our facilities demonstrates his deeper commitment to the success of our school, and his pride in his work sets an outstanding example for others. What makes Mark especially deserving of this recognition is his proactive problem-solving approach to ongoing pursuit of improvement. He consistently looks for ways to improve our maintenance practices, makes workflows more efficient, and ensures that our school remains a safe, functional, and attractive environment for students, staff, and visitors. His supervisor has expressed the following. Mark's contributions to the PACT Building and Grounds have been truly remarkable. This summer, his dedication to enhancing our campus has been evident throughout both the secondary and elementary buildings. At the secondary, his tireless efforts to rejuvenate the grass have been successful. What was once dull now thrives with vibrant green thanks to his persistence and care. At the elementary campus, Mark has gone above and beyond in transforming our office and classroom spaces, carefully patching and painting numerous rooms to give them a fresh, clean appearance. His hard work, attention to detail, and unwavering commitment have left a lasting impact on our school environment, and we are incredibly grateful for everything he does. Tracy Peters. It has been a real pleasure to work with Mark over the last two school years. He's a real hard worker with a strong work ethic. I appreciate his knowledge and skill levels and worked together to complete and resolve maintenance and mechanical issues at our facilities. Mark is also very dependable to help out where it is needed, when we have any staffing issue. Mark is a true asset for all of us. Scott. Mark's contributions are a key part of our daily operations, and his impact is felt throughout the entire school community. We sincerely thank and admire him for his exceptional service and dedication. Thank you, Mark.
Do you want to pay if you would, you get it?
Thank you, Mark.
I will tell you, and I wanna repeat what Tracy said earlier, before we go on, is Mark, um, is, again, thank you. Our grasp, we were really, really, really worried that our football field was gonna be unplayable in the fall. And if you looked and drove by, and, and as if you drove by and looked at the front of our building, it was toast. And we looked at it, and Mark has been so diligent. He has cared for our, our lawns like you wouldn't believe, and our football field is ready for fall sports. It looks phenomenal. Our front entryway looks phenomenal. And, and this guy is, when you, I don't know if he ever misses a day. And he is here, and he shows up thick and thin, so Mark, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
I parked, parked facing the football field, and that's the first thing I saw when I rolled up is, this is looking really good.
Yes.
So it's awesome. All right, on to, uh, item number six, teaching and learning.
Do we have anything for the presentation?
Not for the spotlight, but for DAC.
So we're moving to six B, which is the DAC report, Teresa.
All right, well, thank you Chairman of the Board and Board Members. I just wanna take a moment before I share this report to acknowledge Jack Washburn. I view her as a true asset to the PACT organization. Her leadership, which I am just beginning to understand, has really been critical in the ongoing development, progression, all the good things that we see here at PACT. She is active in our community, and I think really ensures that the decisions that are made are in alignment with our PACT values. And I just wanted to recognize her leadership over time, particularly as she mentors me as I transition to the administrative lead of DAC. She has graciously accepted to stay on as, um, the DAC parent liaison, and I'm very grateful for that, so. Thank you. Yeah. So we had a really great meeting, um, in July, and just very briefly, here are some of those updates. So the DAC description was updated to reflect my hiring and my new position as the administrative lead, and Jack Washborn, did I say it right, Jack Washburn, um, as now the new parent liaison. Um, so looking at everything that DAC is gonna be doing and our responsibilities, we realized that we do not need to be meeting every single month, so we're gonna be meeting every other month or as needed moving forward. And Dr. Flansburgh is in the process of rewriting policy six oh one, curriculum materials approval procedure, and is changing that and kind of, um, building upon that by creating four additional new policies that will be coming to the board. This will be on the agenda for the work session of the September board meeting. Um, and Dr. Lozey also gave us an update of where we are at for the online school. There was a pretty good discussion as far as what the curriculum is gonna look like, how is that gonna align with PACT values? Is it easier to find curriculum or get teachers to adapt what they're teaching in the classroom? So we had a really good, pretty long discussion about it, and it was very exciting. And I know a lot of hard work has gone into it, so thank you for that. It's very exciting. Well, one thing that I'm really excited about as your Executive Director of Teaching and Learning and also a member of DAC is that we're going to be moving forward with our curriculum review cycles. Um, we are planning to review social studies, health, and math this year. And what I'm really excited about is we've kind of landed on what this team makeup is going to be. And in ensuring that we are partnering with parents, we will be asking for parents to volunteer to be part of the curriculum review team along with K-12 teachers and administrators to ensure that we do have that constant through line of parent partnership and feedback as we make these decisions. Any questions?
Dr. Flansburgh.
I would wanna piggyback off of something that Teresa shared in regards to policy six oh one, just so, uh, the board is aware for the next work session. Six oh one, remember, as we were really working hard to align our board numbering with the MSBA policies, it's about instructional materials, but it, it really is about a systematic approach for six oh one. And then when we thought about the procedures that currently existed in six oh one, it didn't really align with the new policy. And Jack and I had had conversations in trying to figure out, well, DAC was going to be working on the procedures part of it, but I was really struggling personally, saying, it doesn't fit. It doesn't actually align under the umbrella of the instructional goals, because that's what six oh one is. It's about district-wide instructional goals and trying to meet those ends. And we were trying to do a, a procedure based on a policy that didn't align any longer. And so, there are four policies that I will be bringing forth that will be new policies. They are not MSBA policies, but they are considered best-practice policies. And I wanna be able to just give you a heads-up early. One is on instructional material review, selection, and use. So it really should be a board-approved policy, because the board is the only entity in the organization that can approve curriculum. And as such, we need a policy that can then outline and give the, what does that, that procedure look like? So it'll come to the work session, it'll go back to DAC, then it would come back to the board. So when we're looking at those feedback loops. The second one is a reconsideration of textbooks and/or other instructional material. So if, if something went through the selection process, came forth, and somebody said, I disagree with this, what's that reconsideration process actually look like? So it, it allows for disagreement and, and being able to build in, uh, that loop and that feedback loop. The next one really comes out of a recent Supreme Court ruling that stated that families can object for religious reasons to instructional materials and instruction, and can have an alternative learning plan. So it's building a policy called Al- Alternative Student Learning Plan, and there'd be a form that is associated with that. But as you will see when we go through this in the next month's work session, you're gonna see a flow and interconnection with every single one of these policies. They all are interconnected, and part of that, and focusing on what that is, our goal is actually to provide instruction that we don't have fifty percent of our families opting on. We're not looking to create, um, instruction that divides and alienates half our families. That's not our goal. We wanna be able to create a really clear process for everybody, but we also know that there are times when someone might object. And legally, they can. So what is that process for a student to be able to do so? And again, we're, we're trying to be proactive and not reactive through this process as we look at what the board and what families, uh, can do u- under the new Supreme Court ruling. And then the last one is instruction of controversial topics. Because I think we need to be, uh, be really forward and proactive on this topic as well. You've heard me say, it is our job to teach kids how to think, not what to think. And really clearly delineating the expectation of what's happening in the classroom, and telling families there will be times that we engage in challenging conversations as kids mature based on developmental age. You are going to have an entirely different conversation with a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior than you would with an elementary student. And recognizing that. And as such, putting guidelines in on how do you have fair and balanced conversations where it is not evident, you know, I, I will go back to, I taught social studies a- as an elementary teacher, and my favorite, um, thing was when kids would say, well, what's your opinion? Because they didn't know. And I'd say, doesn't matter what my opinion is, here's what the facts are. Or, how did you vote based on this election, based on what, you know, the current events are? And they didn't know, because I needed to present factual information to kids. This gives us a little bit of a guide on how to be able to do that. And at the same time, recognizing what might be controversial to me might not be controversial to Ryan whatsoever, and saying, no, I don't see any issue with that. And recognizing there's differences within the community and understanding it. And at the same time, still trying to be able to lay out hard conversations coming forward. I'm sharing that now, because I think it's in such an important conversation that we will be engaging in in next month's work session. And it will be going back to the District Advisory Committee and our parents and, and staff members. But I do want you to know that, you know, the background on this, I, I've got a little background on that one as well, and have spent, uh, maybe a lot of time on these policies in the past as well, and trying to bring them back and being able to say, how, how does this fit our organization, our culture, our climate, and the family and communities we serve? So, there will be those policies. I wanted to be able, as, as Teresa says, hey, Nate's bringing forth four policies, let's be specific about what those are, and I wanna be very transparent about what those are.
Anything else for Teresa or Jack? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa will keep you around for the e-learning plan, item six C.
Right, so I am presenting an updated emergency e-learning plan for your annual review. It is simply updated with the change of, instead of it being for grades seven through twelve, in partnership with, um, Dr. Lozey, we've agreed and communicated with the sixth-grade teachers that this will now be a secondary policy applying to all secondary students in grades six through twelve. So our aim here was to create a very parent-community-reader-friendly document, a one-pager, that could very quickly orient both teachers, families, and students with what their roles and responsibilities were on an e-learning day. I don't think the content of it changed from before. Um, it's just a simple updating, the only shift was for six through twelve. We should note that for elementary students, they will have emergency weather-related closures for up to five days. But if there is a sixth weather emergency closure, then it would require board approval to change the calendar to possibly take a non-school Friday and turn that into a student contact day. For the elementary center only. The secondary would be flexible and could continue with the e-learning days past day five.
All right. Any questions for Teresa before we move into the vote? All right. Then, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the e-learning plan? One second.
Okay. That's presented.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, uh, any further discussion before we vote? All right, we'll move to a roll call vote. Get ready. You wanna call the vote?
Sure. All right, Nicole? Hi. Mr. Lupus?
Hi.
Amanda?
Aye.
Mr. Tassi?
Aye.
Mr. Bush?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Danae?
Aye.
And Nicole?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. All right, moving on to the next item, six D, teaching and learning report.
All right. Well, in my first thirty days as PACT's Executive Director of Teaching and Learning and Literacy Lead, I have just experienced a flurry, and I kid you not, a flurry, of learning and collaboration as we prepare for the upcoming school year. I'm just going to highlight the top five things that I've been focusing on within these last thirty days. First and foremost, I've been working with the building principals, accounts payable, and staff to place curriculum orders for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And I'm working closely with vendors to ensure that all teachers have what they need to work with students on the very first day of school. So as pallets of product arrive, I just want to personally acknowledge and thank the custodial staff, the office staff, and teachers, and my daughter, she did help unpack some pallets, um, for their collaboration and patience as we kind of unpack and deliver these supplies to your classrooms. You have my commitment to continue to work with teachers and principals to ensure that we are just doing an ongoing support of what they need throughout the year, because not everything is needed on day one. Um, secondly, Joanne Mullen is joining me, um, in the Teaching and Learning Department as the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning. And we have been just diligently planning and preparing for welcoming close to thirty new staff members here at PACT. So our new mentoring and induction program will kick off on August fourteenth, um, as we welcome both mentees, the new staff and the mentors, to some workshop days. Our learning together is going to be based on two anchor texts I have here with me. The Supporting Beginning Teachers will be a guide to support mentors as they work with new staff on a regular basis. And then the New Teachers Field Guide is for all of the new staff here. Both books are produced by Marzano and written by the same author, Tina Bogren. What I appreciate about them is they both align with the phases of teaching that we all experience regardless of years of service. And so it's just going to help us hopefully, um, promote longevity here at PACT for both of our teachers, as well as just ensuring that our students are thriving because of the experience and longevity that will exist within, within the organization. Um, I already mentioned this earlier with the DAC report, but the curriculum review cycle has been updated to reflect, um, the content standard implementation expectations set forth by the Minnesota Department of Education. Like I previously said, we'll look at social studies, health, and math. There is differences, though, in those curricular areas. Both social studies and health have the expectation to have fully implemented new standards by next school year, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we are going to condense that curriculum review cycle to a one-year, um, review. Uh, math will begin their two-year review cycle, and that two-year review cycle will be our ongoing practice here at PACT. I just wanted to ensure, Mr. Tassi, that we will have social studies in review in time. But as a board member, I want you to anticipate recommendations for both curricular adoptions in regards to social studies and health in the spring of twenty-six. Um, you also heard during our work session the policy updates that will remain my year-long goal in collaboration with Dr. Flansburgh. Um, our Teaching and Learning Department has the goal of updating and aligning our five hundred policy series focused on the student experience and the six hundred policy series focused on educational programs in accordance with MSBA guidelines and model policies. And then, finally, I will just add that in that commitment for partnering with parents, I've been very interested and intentional in trying to find ways to provide feedback loops with our parents in our decisions of what is created. And so one of the things that I'm working with, um, Ms. Ernstin here, is on the development of our website. Specifically, I'm interested in the teaching and learning component. Since PACT stands for Academic Excellence, um, we want to promote that, we want to showcase that, and we want to ensure that what our parents value, that's in line with PACT's values, are also represented on the website. So we're going to engage in some brainstorming sessions, as well as some, um, research outside of the meetings to bring forth some new ideas to ensure that what is on the website is meeting our community's needs as well as PACT's needs as well. So in the interim, you will see that this, um, page will slowly be built, and it will contain some of those legally required documents, like our local literacy plan, the e-learning plan you just approved, and later this fall, the family engagement plan as well. That is my teaching and learning update.
Awesome, any questions? Thank you, very well put together, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to item number seven, um, seven A, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, just two brief updates. Uh, one thing that we, um, everybody has signed their conflict of interest, uh, forms, so thank you very much, uh, that we forgot to do that last month, but also, uh, when we get to the, uh, Board Action section, uh, and other board reports, uh, the board needs to make sure that you also have designated a board representative to the District Advisory Committee. It needs to be done annually as part of that process. I know, uh, Ms. Ostendorf has served in that role, I don't, uh, and again, that's for a board conversation on if you'd like to continue, or if there's somebody else that would like to be able to enter into that role. But the board would need to make sure that you have, you have identified, uh, a representative for the next year in, in that position. And then there is a BFC update, um, Mr. Ryan Lang did need to resign from the BFC committee, uh, and we would be looking for it as you. And we would be looking for him, as if you've noticed already in our communications to the community. We have put out communications seeking individuals who are interested in serving on the Budget and Finance Committee of the board. They should contact Chair Heineman or myself, and then those individuals will be brought forth to the board to be appointed by the board to serve on the BFC committee. I did ask, as Ms. Ernstin was putting that together to make sure that we're highlighting, we're looking for individuals who have financial background in particular. While anybody can serve, it is a really beneficial skillset to have if you're serving on that committee. Because again, it is legislatively required for charter schools to have a BFC. And we need to make sure that we have enough members to fill that committee. So, I want to thank Mr. Lang for his service on the BFC. He will be missed. We wish him the best, and we do need to fill that position.
Alright. Thank you very much. Yes, he did a great job, so. Bummer he's gone, but on to other things. Alright, seven B, Human Resources and Operations Services.
I apologize in advance, you're going to get to spend a lot of time with me right now. So, I will start with my updates. The best update that I have that I haven't been able to say since November. I am fully staffed right underneath me. All of my directory force are in place. Yes. Lily is our new HR journalist, and she started on Monday. And Nate asked me in a cabinet meeting, he goes, "Does she speak HR, or does she speak Tracy?" And I responded, well, she was at the university, and I was at the university for eleven years. Jason would like this. And so, she came to us from the university, Jason. So, I said, "We speak university." And he's just like, "Yep." Which makes it very relatable. And for everyone else who doesn't speak university, it means the university excels at giving a lot of individual jobs to an individual person. And so, because of that, you get breadth of experience. And then, I can work on the depth with her. So, I'm very excited about that. But that also means we have a new community ed person. We have a new activities director. So, we are fully staffed. So, going into my actual update, food service, we, this is, this just came down the pipe in the last couple of weeks. We actually decided to knock out the wall between the kitchen and their office, the food service director's office. We have so many kids that we need to service lunch for, or we get to service lunch for, that we are running out of space. And so, we decided to take out the wall in between those two locations, and now we can use both spaces for serving children, and that way, we can get them through much quicker. That's the goal. So, it was so exciting today when I saw a hole in the wall. I'm like, "I can see through. This is awesome." And everyone probably went down there and looked, at least all my staff did.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Can you get them through their bathroom? When I've done lunch, I felt like the bottleneck was them entering their...
Yes, yes. So, we're going to, we're going to stretch it out. So, basically, we are allowing them to self-serve. I'm going in way more detail than I was planning. But we are allowing them to self-serve, so they get to pick out their own fruits and vegetables. But we're going to have more kids in the line at the same time. So, we're going to flush them through. I'm excited for it.
Thank you.
Yes. Other items for food service is with Deb's departure. We've been having Joel and Liz training in on how to import everything through Clicks. It's a system that we get reimbursed for, so they've been going to lots of training for that. And we are on track for the beginning of the school year. Liz is also doing serve-safe, so we can be serve-safe qualified at both locations, which is great. And we are recruiting right now for a food server. So, if anyone, even anyone in the audience, wants to serve for four hours a day, we would love to have you. Activities, we've already had our fall kickoff meeting. It was Thursday, July thirty-first. Adam and Cory led that meeting by themselves with Joel in the audience, and I don't know if there is a more intimidating person to have than the previous activities director supervising you. So, that was, that was great. We got that done. Registration, we've had some hiccups in the process with Arbiter, but that is live, and practices commence August eleventh for Minnesota State High School League. And system transition, as I mentioned, Arbiter has been giving Cory some headaches, but it's live and it's working now. Community education, I, like, I can't keep up with Adam. He, he is phenomenal. He's constantly coming up with ideas. He's like, "How about this? How about this?" And I'm the one trying to say, "Okay, yes, and what would the next step be? And how are we going to implement that?" And I didn't think we would have offerings by the beginning of the school year. I thought, yeah, let's, let's shoot for quarter two. But right now, we have offerings every day after school except for Friday, for K-two and three-five. So, that's super exciting. More to come out soon. I just approved the communication today. So, we shall see if it's going to be posted tomorrow or next week. We'll see.
So, quick, quick on that.
Yeah.
So, parents who are previously using Skyhawks will now have an option?
This will be a great option for them.
And PACT will own it and receive revenue on it?
Yes.
Perfect.
We are very excited. We're still looking for a couple of positions, and I told my husband today, I'm like, "If we don't get someone for this, you're going to have to volunteer for a couple of weeks." And he's like, "I'm looking forward to it." So, intro to sports, might be run by Ross Peters for a little while. Christine just chuckled. He's voluntold for a lot of things right now, a lot. He's also doing a field trip for sixth grade possibly, so we'll see. Middle school athletics, Cory, or Adam's been a huge advocate for entering into new programs that haven't been offered at PACT historically. So, we are excited for all of the middle school offerings, and we are going fifth through eighth grade for middle school sports and activities, which, like, why not, I guess, right? It will be a huge game changer for our kiddos when they get to the high school, because they'll already have been introduced to these sports. They've already been playing with the teammates. So, we're excited. IT, of course, she wasn't here for this. He's like, "Don't call me up, Tracy. I don't want to talk." The big thing that we've been pushing right now is two-factor authentication. You'll hear me say multi-factor authentication, but two-factor authentication is essentially, you're typing in your password, and then you're also getting something coming to your phone, or you're also getting it through an app. We've had a lot of attempts, cyber attacks, attempts, and people have been getting their emails breached into. So, we have moved forward with a two-factor authentication requirement for all staff. And Chu came up with a way to essentially lock emails for staff if they're logging in from an IP address that they shouldn't be logging into from. So, that's exciting. Or not so exciting for him. Go ahead, Nate. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it.
I just want to be able to share a little bit more. When Tracy talks about the number of cybersecurity attacks that have actually been perpetrated against us, or attempted to be perpetrated against us, we are talking, Chu shared at a cabinet meeting last week. He literally turned his screen around and said, "In the last week, I have been able to deflect cybersecurity attacks from six different countries." And they're, and I've created these false firewall for them to be able to be redirected to, so they're going to nowhere. But he's created this backdoor that is rerouting them and keeping our system safe, and he's creating that. And, and building these programs and the coding that he's got to be able to do to do this. And it's amazing, because when you see that, I can tell you with confidence, prior to Chu's arrival, we didn't have that. And we were vulnerable in ways we didn't even know. And so, he is protecting our network and protecting everything, and we're going to continue to improve those features. But it is, and again, you saw the city of St. Paul. They literally got shut down, and we were talking about that, and Chu was like, "Yep, depending on who the bad actor is, you know, they are, you know, we're trying to prevent us from becoming, like the city of St. Paul, where they are going to take months and months to recover."
Chu just messaged me saying, "I'm watching you."
Well, tell him we're singing his praises.
Yeah, he knows that. He can hear you. So, anyway, it's, it's been phenomenal to have him on our team. I've told him, like, he goes, "I just want to help you not be so stressed." And I'm like, "Trust me, I don't even have to worry about IT, because I know you're taking care of it." So, that has been great. Accounting and finance, so many transitions lately. With Deb leaving us and switching over to Edfin, there's been some hiccups, especially because, you know, right now is auditing season for Bridget. But we're working through the transitions and figuring things out, and coming up with a process that will continue to get better and more efficient as we go. But, like, Joel is probably how, he's where I was at when I started right now, as far as being overwhelmed. But as Nate told him, he's like, "It doesn't get easier. You just get better." So, he's, he's realizing that right now. Human resources, I mentioned that we onboarded Lily. So excited to have her. I can't speak enough to that. She's just like, as soon as she came on board, she said, "I want to make your job easier, Tracy. What can I take off your plate today?" She went to training on day two, and I asked her, "Are you feeling overwhelmed? Are you scared?" And she's like, "Nope, we got this." So, she's very confident. She's moving forward. And especially with all of the new hires that we've been going through, she did her first couple of offer letters today. Might have made, you know, some little things, but she's learning. So, that's great. Recruitment, as I mentioned, like, I'm, I'm fully covered on my staff. We're working on doing the community ed positions, so they can get posted, so we can do it officially. However, we're still working on a couple teacher positions. So, even while I was sitting over there, I responded to one of Dr. Losi's candidates, and I'm like, "Done. She's hired." So, that was great. That was phenomenal. Working through those, and I think we'll be in a good position by end of next week. I, I'm thinking positive on this.
What's left to hire? Did we fill the science?
One of them. I have one more question.
Middle school.
Based on the interviews that we have, we'll have one science and then a behavior pair will be able to be extended for that.
We bumped her.
So, we were, we were able to get an extremely experienced science teacher, maybe from another charter school nearby that...
Oh, stop it. Nate loves to steal thunder.
I'm not stepping on Sean Stone's on this one. Just know that it's a celebration on one, one of them for sure.
Well, there's, there's many celebrations for Sean. She has many celebrations. Lots of experience coming on board. Facilities, Joel's already ordered our no parking signs for our sped vans over at elementary, so we won't have those temporarily, temporary construction cones that we're using. Thank you so much. Volunteer beautification event with Substance Church, they are coming back. Like, they came and did a ton of work for us, and they're coming back to do more. So, that is incredible. My staff all appreciate that. They're like, "I really don't want to move mulch, Tracy." So, if you have time and you're available August sixteenth from ten to twelve, please come join the fun. We have a sign-up genius for it, so.
It's so fun.
So fun. I mean...
Who doesn't like to weed?
I'll be there. I'll be there, so it's going to be super fun. I'll bring a wheelbarrow.
I mean, you came up with creative ideas with the truck, though. I mean, moving the mulch over, we're going to make sure this time they drop it off in two different spots in the back. I've already communicated that, so we're good to go there. So, we so appreciate that, and I will be there. My husband will be there, because he's always there. But, transportation, new bus routes. I keep, I'm like, "Is it tangerine?" Because Joel has this thing with, with colors and fruit. He's like, "It's the next one. It's peach." I keep calling it tangerine, and he's like, "No, no, no, Tracy. It's peach." He's like, "I think tangerine's next." But Cockeys is taking up another route specifically, because we negotiated them down on the contract. So, it's a cost savings for us to have them do it versus American Transportation. We're excited. American Transportation did the route, and the routes are actually in place right now. And we said, "We have a draft," but it's pretty solid. But for families that are in the Rum River area, they are going to take part of that pink route to hand off to the peach, so it will alleviate how many children are on the bus in that section. And then, yeah, that's all of my updates. Joel plans on having the routes out by August eleventh.
Awesome. Any questions? Alright, thanks, Tracy.
Yeah, and then you get to see me more.
Okay.
So, next?
Oh, yes, for the resolution.
Sorry, going back to it. Four oh three B, four fifty-seven school board resolution. Right now, we had said that the match is through the four oh three B. However, this resolution basically states that the match that the school contributes to can go to the four oh three B or four fifty-seven B. Now, stepping back real quick, when we approved the last budget, it was a one percent match where all staff was included in the budget. So, this is a new thing. We didn't currently have a match for all staff. This will allow teachers and custodians and all support staff to contribute, as long as they are at least, it's usually at least seventy-five percent. Can be fifty, depending on how much of the year they cover. It's IRS regulations. So, all that to say that salaried staff, teachers, contract staff, they all would get a one percent match. This resolution is saying, "Hey, you can choose. Do you want to contribute to the four oh three or the four fifty-seven? Either way, we will give you a one percent match." The big component of this is, or the push, is the four fifty-seven B actually has a better investment rate charge for staff. So, when you think about how much you're actually paying someone else to invest your money versus you investing it yourself. So, four fifty-seven B is offered through MSRS, and they just happen to have the lowest fees. Go ahead, Nate.
The acronym MSRS stands for?
Minnesota State Retirement System.
Awesome. Any questions on that before we vote, Nicole?
One percent for you standard.
One percent? You want to be below, well, one percent for a match. Sorry, I was thinking fees. One percent, it is our starting place. I will say that. Schools in general, I haven't heard of a lot of schools that do matches K-12. Nate?
A lot of them will do dollar amounts, and some of them might be anywhere from two hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. We're tying it to a teacher's salary, so as your salary goes up and you stay with the company, so does your match. So, that's, you know, it, it's, it's an opportunity.
A great example is Christine told me right after we talked about the one percent match. She said, "This is more than my husband gets."
He works in the state of Minnesota, same MSRS or whatever it's called, and they get three hundred and fifty dollars, I think it was. So, no match. It's just, this is better. If you're making thirty-five thousand a year or higher, this is better. And that's one of the second-largest employer in the state, so.
I think there's, there's always room, but I think we need to focus on our big, on our finan, refinancing and things, I think.
And the big important thing here is that we're starting.
Yeah.
Right? We're doing something that historically PACT has never been able to do, or even, yes, this is brand new. But I would love to encourage teachers to contribute, and it's very difficult to encourage them to do that when they're like, "Well, you're already taking money out for TRA." Well, this way, I can say, "If you invest, though, we're giving you money." You know, like, "We are giving you this free money." You know, like we are giving you this free money and ultimately it's helping them retire. Go ahead, Nate.
Nicole, one of the things that we want staff to understand is their retirement really focusing on that three-legged stool. So recognizing while there's social security that's there now, who knows what that will or won't look like in the future. But there's a pension. Teachers get a TRA pension. But again, if we're able to help them subsidizing, create their own retirement pension on top of that, it's only going to benefit them in retirement in the long term. And we want to take care of our staff. And this is our start in being able to say, how can we help take care of our staff not only today, but twenty or thirty years from now? And, and that's our goal through this process.
And even when you heard MSRS, sorry, MSRS came in for our open enrollment session and they were even explaining that, well, it's a three-legged stool. Everyone always says their TRA, well, I have TRA, so I don't need to invest. But really, TRA is only supposed to replace a third of their income. It's not supposed to replace a hundred percent of their income. So depending on how you want to retire and what you want to do in your retirement, it's important to invest. But this will need action.
All right. Any questions for Tracy before we move into a vote? All right. Then we'll do go to roll call vote. Dr. Finsberg, call it.
All right. So we'll start down with Nicole again.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Jason Tossi.
Aye.
Amanda. Jason Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
Nicole.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes. All right, on to staff handbook.
So in front of you is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six PACT Charter School Employee Handbook. Um, this did go through Kraus Anderson for legal and compliance reasons and they, this is the working document that we are providing in today. There are a couple minor changes that I made after Kraus Anderson reviewed and it was mainly for, for reading purposes. Um, we had things in one spot and also mentioned it later on in another spot, so I consolidated it as much as I possibly could because I was told by some staff last week, I don't know if I've ever fully read the handbook and I'm like, I do ask you to sign up on it every year, so please make sure you read it. But this handbook, like I mentioned earlier tonight, will be changing again in December. It will be back in front of the board for approval because Minnesota Paid Leave is going into effect January one.
All right. Questions about the handbook for Tracy? No questions. All right, um, then looking for a motion to approve the handbook.
Motion to approve the employee handbook.
Hey, we have a motion. Give a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to roll call vote.
Nicole.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Jason Tossi.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
Jason Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
And Nicole.
Aye.
All right. Motion's approved. Moving on to item seven B three, maintenance contract.
This maintenance contract is coming up for, um, review and recommendation for approval based off of replacing our evening custodians at the secondary school. When, going through this last school year, we had a number of, uh, facility absences that were challenging for us to replace. Um, and we only have one person on the sub list, which made it difficult to keep up our level of expectation for cleaning. Um, I had a number of teachers tell me that they didn't think that their room had been swept this year, um, which is a challenge. And because of that, I looked at getting vendor bids. Joel actually solicited these bids for us and while we reached out to between five to seven companies, we've received two bids in response. Uh, the big, the, the big bottom line here is that this would be a cost savings of roughly sixty-seven thousand dollars to the school. And as I mentioned earlier tonight, I'm looking for a recommendation on moving forward with one of these or scrapping this and not doing either.
All right. So we discussed this in the work session. And I think the conversation led us to CATTI. I do see two on here, the CATTI agreement and the CATTI cleaning specification.
Um, the CATTI investment recap is where you're going to see the dollar amount. The CATTI agreement is the terms.
Okay. All right. Do we have a, uh, opinion on this one? I know we, we leaned towards CATTI before. So if we're still leaning with CATTI, um, we'd want, uh, we'd want a motion to accept the maintenance contract with CATTI as the vendor. Yes.
My only question, no preference, the total per month? Does that have an impact for us at all? Like I know you said the total amount was within three hundred.
Yeah.
Do you care if it averages out or it's like somewhere with cheaper versus?
Um, so the difference between the two contracts, for those that haven't looked at it, CATTI, uh, charges you over nine months. Citywide charges you over twelve months. It really doesn't, like, it doesn't make a difference for us one way or another when it comes to the dollar amount. Um, when you're talking about how much cost savings we're looking at, it's not going to impact us.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Then be looking for a motion from somebody for, to approve the maintenance contract for CATTI.
Motion to approve the maintenance contract for CATTI.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion before we go? If none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Nicole.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Jason Tossi.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
Jason Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
Nicole.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. All right, moving on to student Chromebook bid proposal.
This is coming to you tonight because it's over fifty thousand dollars in nature. We need these Chromebooks for the beginning of the school year. Uh, the, we solicited many bids and again, we only received two back, um, SHI and I should know the name because it's not, yes. Vivacity, is that how you say it?
That's what I said.
Vivacity. Um, and we have a Staples bid, but yeah. So, um, looking for approval to move forward with one of these bids. The one, um, point that my IT director pointed out that he was, um, uncomfortable with was renewed. Specifically going with renewed Chromebooks versus brand new ones. He said, when asked, well, can you process through all of these that quickly? And he said, well, Ian was able to do a hundred in a day. So that was the feedback that I got. So we're looking at two hundred devices. So he's like, that's two days. Um, but.
So the staff recommends?
Staff recommends the SHI.
Okay. Any questions for the staff? All right, um, so we're looking for a motion to approve the, um, purchase of student Chromebooks from SHI.
A motion to approve the bid for Chromebooks from SHI. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? I will be abstaining from the bid. I do work for Vivacity. I have no affiliation with ownership. And the sales rep that submitted the bid is not on my team, so even if they were selected, it wouldn't have resulted in compensation, compensation. But just for the optics of it, I will be abstaining. Any other? Any else? Okay, uh, roll call vote.
Nicole.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Tossi.
Aye.
Amanda. Mr. Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Oh, Nathan.
Sorry, Ryan.
Abstaining.
I'm abstaining, thank you. I was on autopilot.
Just got to get it on record that you're abstaining.
Thank you for catching me.
Yep, Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
Nicole.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. All right, um, moving into our next one, community education fees.
And it's the last one I have for you tonight. Um, community education fees. As we are launching all of these programs, we need to make sure that we can list a price and charge for that. We are super excited. Um, the, the price that we are proposing is a hundred and forty dollars for a six-week session. That's one session a week, when you think about it. And I'm, I broke it down because that's how, you know, I think. But ten dollars an hour is the equivalent of what parents would be paying for this service. Fridays are prorated, as said in the, um, the community ed fees because there are only four non-school, or four school Fridays for the session.
Okay, any questions?
So what exactly falls under that umbrella? I mean, I'm, maybe I'm a little naive to that.
Right, for community ed fees, um, so we are looking, this is elementary specifically, what we are offering, starting in the beginning of school year. Um, we are talking about intro to sports, um, K-two and three-five. We are talking about, um, I can't remember what the name of the reading Columbia, it's, it's something like STEAM. Uh, yeah, it was a, yes.
It was a STEM class.
Yes, it was a STEAM class of reading. There are STEM classes on Friday for K-two and three-five. Um, music class, um, flag football is not launching right away. It was hopeful to launch, but it's not launching right away. Uh, we have, oh yeah, art club, yes, art club, of course. Two different offerings of art club and I'm trying to figure out if we can do a Lego club. We really need Legos though, and Legos are not cheap. So if there's any parents out there that are looking for donation opportunities, we would love to have a Lego club. But lots of options right now. That's what community ed entails when we're talking about middle school sports, which also falls, falls under the community ed coordinator. Middle school sports are separate. Those are approved, we approved them last month. So those fees are separate.
All right, any other questions? All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the community ed fees. All right, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm moving to a roll call vote.
Nicole.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Jason Tossi.
Aye.
Amanda. Jason Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
I can now say aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
And Nicole.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. All right, on to elementary principal report. Dr. Brown.
Great. We have been such a team this summer that I feel like everyone's report just kind of bleeds into our other reports because it's been a very collaborative summer and I'm really thankful for our team here at PACT. So I'll give you a few elementary nuggets of information and take any questions. So for where we are at with hiring, we did, uh, get an opening for a first grade position, which we did find, uh, excellent. A very strong candidate and she has seven years of teaching, master's degree plus forty in literacy. We're thrilled to have her on the first grade team and introduce her to our, our, our group. So all of our grade level positions are filled as of right now. Who, knock on wood, who knows next week what could happen, but we're thrilled about that. We are still looking to fill our elementary interventionist position. We are being very selective in our candidate search. We're looking for someone who has that expertise in literacy. And, um, so we're taking our time to find the right person and, um, we hope that that person will come. I know they will. So it's just a matter of time. Uh, we are also looking to hire our more building substitutes so that we have that consistent person on hand for those daily calls that we get when, when subs are needed. So we're starting to interview for those positions next week. Um, but on the side, I've hired one of our paraprofessionals as a safety patrol advisor since Marcy Tipton retired. Um, so there's all the little duty type of positions that we're filling on top of all of the, the formal staffing positions. Um, planning for fall, I mentioned last month that we were planning a professional development day for our fourth and fifth grade teams to start the work of, of looking ahead at flexible grouping for how will they get to know the standards and the curriculum and the, the roadmap for how to, what, you know, if they have students in fourth grade that are ready for fifth grade material, how can they plan for them? And then for fifth grade, what if they have students that are ready for sixth grade material? We want to challenge our students and get that year's growth in a year's time. So we had some great days of professional development. Fourth grade now has, we ordered a fifth grade curriculum for fourth grade. And fifth grade now has some sixth grade curriculum in our building and we're ready to tap into it to see where those enrichment opportunities lie. So we're thrilled about that and, um, I just want to say thank you to Teresa. Uh, the teachers did an amazing job in the spring to outline all of their curriculum needs, their supply needs. And Teresa's done a fabulous job at, at helping them with their orders so that everything is, is ready to go. Um, some, something that I'm really excited about, maybe you've heard that our, our theme for our workshop weekend for our year coming up is Ready to Roar? Am I stealing your thunder, Christine? Okay, okay. So I love themes, I have to admit, and I was very excited to hear that we have a theme. Um, and of course I took the word roar in my head and thought, what could we do with that at the elementary campus? And so I do have an acronym that I really believe in as far as the work that we are going to do to be a hub for us. So roar, I'm, I'm, I'm claiming that the R is for rigor. We are about high rigor, even at the elementary campus, absolutely. And O is for optimism, doing it with that optimistic lens, that assets-based, um, lens of looking at our students and, and being optimistic about what they can achieve and being optimistic with one another, um, and the work that, that the staff can do. So rigor, optimism, the A is for achievement. We care about achievement. We want to have the data support that our students are achieving and we're going to be tracking it closely. We're going to be looking at data closely all year long and just continuing to help our students achieve in all developmental domains. Because the last R is for responsiveness and we are going to respond to that data. What do we learn from it? What do we need to adjust? What do we need to adapt? So that we can continue to meet kids where they're at and not just, um, teach a curriculum manual from Monday to Friday and be done. It's not about that. It's about the kids and responding to their needs. So I'm really excited about Ready to Roar. So we, we are ready to roar. We've been kind of joking about that, like, are you ready to roar? I'm not quite ready to roar yet. Yeah, so, but it's been a lot of fun. For, um, workshop week, you know, we've been doing a lot of professional development collaboration, thinking about the type of sessions we want to offer our staff. Um, the required ones and also the dreamy ones. What are the things that we are excited about? At the elementary campus, some specific ones for elementary sessions that we're looking at are, we are going to be establishing a, a building operations committee, BAC. Uh, and, uh, secondary already has this committee, but we don't have that at elementary. And what I'm so excited about for this group is, um, often our instructional leadership team gets into the weeds on operational things because we have to talk about our building and our programs, but it, but we lose sight of academics because we're talking about the operations piece. So now we're going to have two different groups. We're going to have a BAC talking about operations stuff and our BILTS team can really more focus on the academic part of, of the leadership in our building. So I'm excited about that, launching that. We'll be, as a team, reviewing our academic data, our survey data from families from the spring. We're going to look at that, be transparent about it. Ask ourselves, what can we learn from this? How can we grow and even be better because of what we can learn from, from our surveys? Uh, we'll be setting professional learning community norms and goals. So when team, teams meet together, what are the things that, that they are accountable for in those meetings? Again, to help with that achievement, that rigor, that optimism and responsiveness. Um, and then we're going to talk about expectations on things like lesson planning and there's some excitement. I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to give a teaser to the elementary teachers in the room, but, but we're going to look at lesson planning differently this year and in a way that responds to, to our student needs. So I'm really excited about that. Um, we're going to be talking about expectations for family partnership communication. You know, it's all, it's kind of assumed that it's done well. How can we make sure and be accountable that it's, that it's done well? So, um, that of course is who PACT is, is family partnership. So, um, that, of course, is who PACT is, is family partnership, and, and we care a, about getting that, that two-way communication feedback loop. And so, um, I want to help our, our teachers set the year off on the right note, and making sure that that's a priority. Something fun, uh, all classroom teachers, if you've ever been to the elementary building, maybe you noticed our lost and found area. Maybe, and maybe you've seen how it just explodes into our hallway. Or maybe you've come over to door, uh, two, which is over by our gym, and seen at recess how kids just throw their coats and throw their stuff, and it's all over the floor, and teachers try to manage it all, but it gets a little messy. So we, um, this year, every teacher's gonna get a big utility tub that they'll bring with them to recess time. And anything, the lunchboxes, the coats, the thing, you know, the hats, anything that kids don't want goes into the tub with the teacher name on it. And then they know the teachers will have it, and everything hopefully can be housed a little bit better because we do care about the aesthetics of PACT, we, we want it to be a place where kids want to be every day, and that means we have to clean up after ourselves a little bit better. So that's just something I'm actually really excited about, um, so one of the little things that make us happy, right? So that is my report for now, summer had, like I said, it's just been such a collaborative, um, journey, and I'm really thankful for it. Any questions about elementary school?
Any questions? Nope, great, report as always, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, secondary principal report.
Yes.
Dr. Losi.
Alright, so at the secondary, we are preparing for our incoming sixth graders. So we have web training for our eighth graders, and for those unfamiliar, it's a nationwide program designed to welcome and support sixth graders by connecting them, um, with web leaders, and so those are identified eighth graders that have leadership skills and really possess all of our character traits and what it means to be a Panther. Um, so those eighth graders will come in, uh, so they'll start Monday and Tuesday with training, and then the sixth graders will come in for orientation. And so they lead that orientation with them, they have small groups, and then there are touchpoints throughout the year just to help them feel more familiar on campus, so really excited about that. Um, as Ms. Wyden was talking about earlier, we are thrilled about our progress with our online campus. So, um, have had a chance to pull some board members who are very familiar with programs. Um, we've had a chance to connect with other program leaders. We've looked at curriculum, um, we've looked at just different setups, and so we're, we think that we have something that's gonna be really great. We're, we're just finishing kind of the vetting process, and then we'll be presenting that to DAC, and that will come back to you as well. Um, we are hoping that during Ramsey Days, we'll be able to provide some information to the community to just kind of start getting the hype up for the program. So the website is ready, um, the video is on there. We're pretty much set to go, we just need to go live at this point. Um, so, and just a small shift for us, so instead of looking at grades nine and 10, we're actually gonna be looking at grades seven, eight, and nine to start, so we might be able to have a little bit bigger start than we had originally planned, which is really exciting. Um, but also by doing grades seven and eight, um, it allows us to kind of hone in on those electives rather than feeling the pressure to just offer something more expansive to nine and 10 right away. So we want to make sure that whatever we launch is ready, and that it's really high quality for our families. So, yeah, we are super excited about it. So in addition to some of the things that Laura was talking about for workshops, um, for us, we continue to plan for our kickoff for having students back. Um, as I was talking about earlier, I've now like kind of set aside the, the Target auction, it will probably go till midnight. Um, but we've had the opportunity to go ahead and bid, and what's really convenient for us is that Target has the same branding colors that we do. And so, um, tomorrow we will go ahead and pick up probably two truckloads of furniture, so this area will get a makeover, if you have a chance, the loft already has new furniture.
Looks great, by the way.
Yeah, thanks, and then we'll go ahead and finish, we have one more red booth's coming, we have two high-top white tables coming. I'm really excited, it's fun to have some things that the kids are excited about. There were a couple of students in yesterday who were like, wait, so for P S E O, can I just like come hang out up here? And I'm like, absolutely, that's what it's for, you know? And so just to be able to keep them on campus and for them to feel like it's a place that's a little bit more like home, and I mean luckily for us with the red, it's just some of the pops of color, and so we're hoping in addition to adding some directional signage and some more branding, that the kids will really, obviously their feedback has been that it's like a little bit drab, they said that it felt a little bit like a penitentiary, and so just honestly like taking one step at a time to move away from that and to make it a place that they're really proud of, so I am super, super excited about it. Um, hiring update for us, so we have some mega hires, I'm really excited about it. We have an ELA teacher who is a professor, um, so we'll be able to offer a CIS course in every one of our core areas this year, which is pretty incredible. Um, so she has, I think, twenty-seven years of experience. Um, we also have a chemistry teacher, this will be her twenty-fourth year, and she holds every single science license. Um, and so that was one of the things that we were just super, super excited about. Our science team was in today, um, they'll be in tomorrow, they're organizing, and it's really fun just watching them mesh together and riff and have a great time. Um, and when you interview people, you know that they're gonna work, but to just see them together is really, really fun, so. Um, yes, during this meeting, we also had an art teacher agree to come work at PACT, so we're very excited for her. We have a graphics design teacher coming to work for PACT, so that's great. Um, tomorrow we have an EL interview, and so that leaves us with one science position and, um, a behavior paraposition. So we're getting there. So we have a couple options and just things that we kind of have in the works to go ahead and fill those spots, yes.
I just want to be able to let everybody know, because when we talk about hiring late in the season, it's also very normal to have open positions this late in the season. If Anna Rae Klupfer were here this evening, she had looked at her old school district and talked, came and shared with me how many special ed openings they were looking for in her traditional district. And she's like, they can't find individuals, if you look at traditional districts, just no different than charters. It's not related just to charter schools, education, there's always late season hiring. I can tell you how many times, uh, my wife would not appreciate, um, all the, the, the Friday nights on, uh, Labor Day weekend when we were still doing interviews at eight, nine o'clock at night to make sure that we had somebody, and we were offering jobs at eleven o'clock sometimes at night, um, Saturday mornings, Sunday mornings, and saying, can you come in on Monday, Labor Day to set up your classroom, so when kids return on Tuesday, there's somebody in the classroom? That is, that is not, I wish I could say that's a very uncommon thing, it is not. And so when we're looking at hiring late in the game, the fact that we have so many positions filled, I'm thrilled with that. I would love all of them filled sooner rather than later, but it's also not uncommon. So I want to be able to share that, and it's, I will say though, it's getting harder to find teachers than it was a decade ago because there are fewer people going into the profession. So if you're watching and want to become an educator, we want you to become an educator because we need really amazing teachers in the field today.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's all I've got for you.
Alright, any questions?
Yes. Nicole?
So what are we to hear all the details put on, like, when, because I'm so excited to hear? Next month?
I mean.
So I, I do. So I think part of that, Nicole, is our authorizer has verbally agreed, you know, like in email communications, basically said, not a big deal, which should be good too, because we actually have to have a new contract with our authorizer that incorporates the online school as part of it. They've indicated no issue with moving forward with that, and we still are taking a little bit of a leap of faith when they're indicating, oh no, we do that for our other schools, you'll be fine. And also acknowledging and recognizing, we don't have that contract yet, because that'll have to come to the board, and they've asked us to wait till the fall to do that, she goes, oh, when we come out for our site visit, we'll do it there. And we know we're going to be promoting this because that, we're gonna be starting and pushing that forward soon. So I would say that probably within the next thirty to sixty days, you're going to start seeing far more information coming out than you've seen thus far. It's coming, and we also know that there's the, we want to make sure that we're threading the needle, crossing the Ds, dotting the Is, and we don't want to screw anything up along the way, so I will say that.
I do have a question as well.
Yes.
About the online.
Yeah.
What happens if there's a student who's online and they want to switch?
So they are welcome to join the waiting list or the lottery for on-campus. So, um, the way it works with the state of Minnesota is that if you have an online program, it's actually considered another site.
Okay.
And so because it's another site, it has its own lottery and its own waiting list. So the lottery for the online program will open after the lottery closes for our, for our campus.
Okay.
Yep. So they would just have to get on this.
Will not really affect each other, so they can get.
They are not related, mm-hmm.
Okay, I had a moment asking that too.
Yep.
Except they do get the sibling.
Right, they would get the sibling preference, but you can't just like jump back and forth.
Like they themselves are the sibling, or if they're sibling?
If, if they have a sibling.
Okay, if they were an only child.
It's like elementary and secondary.
Correct.
And now.
Okay.
Or if you jumped in and got in on the seven, eight, nine, um, or six, seven, eight, sorry, if you got in.
Seven, eight, nine.
If you got in on seven, eight, nine, and you had a sibling, and, you know, you recognize, boy, if we want him in elementary, as Christine was saying. They go to the, you know, depending on where other, um, sibling preferences are, staff preferences, they go to, to the top of the waiting list for the in-person.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, but there is no, I mean, there's, there's not a thing where like a kid starts and they're like, you know, I think I'd just rather switch to in-person. At that point, they're welcome to join the waiting list, but there, there's no back and forth at this time, or a hybrid option, just. No. Mm-mm, nope. Yeah, we're excited, so as soon as, as soon as I get the thumbs up, we'll be really excited to share with you.
Awesome. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Furniture's super cool, too.
So excited.
Yeah, looks good. Alright, communications and community engagement report, Christine.
Alright, well, as of, just a few highlights from my written report. As of July thirty-first, we're sitting at fourteen eighty-nine students. Um, that number's actually down about ten this week, uh, we pushed out withdrawal forms, it's typical this time of year. Um, and so we are backfilling most of them, there were a couple, um, the eleventh and twelfth grade list doesn't have a waiting list. So we, um, we will be shy maybe too, but we are working to fill those. And then we are still at the eight-hundred-ish mark on a waiting list, so just amazing, to be quite honest. Um, and all elementary seats are full, so it's just that eleven, twelve, it's really hard to backfill, and people don't leave at this stage. I think we have a few foreign exchange students, um, starting to want to be in part of a family here that, and then they can go here, and we always like to take those to, um, fill out our twelfth graders, so we'll see how that ends. Everything's looking positive, Denise is very busy. Um, our twenty-six, twenty-seven lottery opens in three weeks, so I'm taking three days off next week to regroup, to come back and start pushing out our, um, ads and things for our new lottery and start to communicating. We have currently nineteen-hundred individuals subscribed to hear about enrollment information, like sitting on a subscription list. And that does not include the eight-hundred that are already on our waitlist, so we'll be pushing out to about twenty-six hundred people, so I don't have any concerns about the lottery, um, for next year. So I really don't know if there will be any ads, to be quite honest. Um, we are making a push right now to, I'd like to see the high school list be a little deeper. And so we're doing some organic trials on, um, social media, nothing that's, um, being sponsored or boosted at all. Um, just trying some different languages and, um, you know, maybe targeting someone down the road when we talk about tuition-free and strong values, so, um, just playing around with that right now. Uh, as mentioned, online campus is ready to roll out, I just need a thumbs up from VOA. Uh, so full commi- communication and marketing plan has been written, um, there's the landing page, a welcome videos on there. Some email automations have already been set up, um, a subscription form so that we can see like what the interest is gonna be, and if we need to advertise at all, um, we're just waiting on that official go-ahead, so. Uh, in July, we introduced Parent Square, as most everyone knows by now, you've been blasted by lots of things. Um, July one, we started with staff, and fifteenth with parents, and students, we did on July thirtieth. And, oh, I think about sixty percent have actually registered their accounts, and, uh, seemed, I haven't had any complaints about it yet. So that is good news, everyone really likes it. Um, I think it only seems to get better, they make a lot of improvements even since we started launching it. You know, they give a, an update, they're like, hey, we fixed this, or we've done that, so pretty excited about, um, their, them and their technology. And then I've been working closely with our tech guys because we have people that have data issues, like Ryan. We fixed him today, so it just, trying to learn, we don't know what we're doing, to be quite honest, and then we go, oh, what if I, what if we divorced Sarah and Ryan? And then put him in as the new husband, and it worked, so.
As far as they know, my wife was.
He was a preman for twenty minutes.
As far as they know, she was not.
Twenty minutes.
But he then got an invite, and now he's in the system, so.
We're back together, it's great.
It is.
That's better than ever.
And. It cleaned up Infinite Campus too, so we're, as we're cleaning up people in Parent Square, we're able to go back and, and work on our database as well, so. Uh, it's just a lot. Uh, what else is going on? And district newsletter started going out, a couple, we've had two, it has a little bit of a fresh look, um, in design, and we're sending it through Parent Square, and so that is also different. It looks really good on an app and on your phone, and so I'm excited about that as well. Uh, online registration started in Infinite Campus, which is where parents go in, um, for the new school year, and they fill out all their things, and they do all their forms, and unfortunately, right now, only ten percent of students have done their paperwork, or parents have done the paperwork, so we're gonna keep pushing that out. Um, last year, the last two years with expansion, it was just really hard to keep track of who did and who didn't, but we are gonna be, um, making sure that we are in better compliance with all of the required things, and that we have really good ways to communicate with our families, um, by updating their contact information. And we're also pushing on the mi- missing state-required immunization forms. That is something that we have not been diligent about in the past, and it is legally required by statute to have either the immunization form or the, um, exemption, uh, what do you call that, the, uh, conscious objector.
Conscientious objective.
Yes, and making sure it's notarized and getting those paperwork in, so there's a lot of paperwork that's gonna be happening. Um, last year, it sounds like about twenty to twenty-five percent of students were missing that paperwork, and were not followed up on, and so we want to make sure we're in compliance. Um, website development is moving forward, I don't know whose idea it was to have a district and elementary and a secondary site, she obviously was not well that day. I can hardly find things, but it is coming along, and I have about ninety pages left to build and trying to get that done in September if possible for when the enrollment launches. So people will actually see that we do have academics here, and we do have character here, and then to just get some of that last-minute stuff cleaned up. And then into the fall, we'll start polishing it up, looking for, and I don't know who we is, me, we'll start polishing it up, getting some, um, design elements, cleaning up some language, and, um, doing a little bit more visually with some of it and doing some photography. And finally, as mentioned, we will have a tent at Ramsey Happy Days on September sixth, and our dance team will be performing in the parade, and we would love to see everyone out there, and bonus points if you wear your PACT gear.
Awesome, any questions?
Oh, how many PACT gears?
Oh, we can hook you up.
I have a, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So with all of your technology, are you, are you feeling the help improvement? Like we did Parent Square and the, I, I know it's like a lot of work to get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
Absolutely.
The benefit behind it.
Absolutely, um, it is way easier for me to even put together a message to go out. Um, I've had a number of staff come and sit with me and learn it, and they're just doing amazing things already. I can see what they're working on and sending out, creating their groups, creating, um, notifications, training a little bit, like, oh, you can make this look prettier, did you know that? No, that's awesome, you know? So I think as soon as teachers get back and they start. So I think as soon as teachers get back and they start utilizing it, I think we'll see an improvement. I think for parents, having that one place to go to where all of your communication is about all of your kids or their teams or their, I think it'll be really good, so.
Thanks for your hard work, that's a lot of pages.
It's fun for me, but yeah, it is, we are to the pages that I've been avoiding. So it's the ones that require a lot more writing and research, so. But the team's helping, so it's great.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks great. All right, on to I have number eight, Board Chair Report. So I shared this with everyone in the working session, but I am building out that notebook LM. We're at three hundred series, once this gets updated with four hundred, we should have quite a bit. Practicing some links just to make sure it works, but it's, it's pretty slick. It just allows you to use AI within a narrow parameter. So it doesn't search outside of the policies, it only searches inside the policies. And then it gives you links to everywhere it pulls, so it's pretty nice. Moving on to the next item, the Superintendent Evaluation Summary. So we'll be reading this since it was a closed session. So we'll be reading a summary of the superintendent's evaluation. So the school board convened on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five for its regular monthly meeting with a primary focus on the performance review of Superintendent Dr. Nathan Flansburgh. Following a comprehens- comprehensive discussion, the board members unanimously praised his performance as superior. They specifically lauded his exceptional ability to turn around the district's finances, his skills in building strong administrative and teaching teams while maintaining the unique character of the school and his unwavering commitment to advancing academic excellence across the district. The board expressed their full confidence in his continued leadership and his ability to guide the district towards its educational goals. That will summarize the superintendent's evaluation summary. Any questions on that? Discussion? All right, so then moving on to eight B, Other Board Reports. So one thing we'll have to add is the DAC liaison representative from the board. So Ms. Ostendorf has done a great job thus far, but may be willing to cede that position to a board member who would be interested. So do we have a board member? Would love.
It's not every month now.
It's every other month. The thrilling job of getting to know the district even closer as the DAC liaison. Anyone online that would love to be the DAC liaison?
What do you want to do now, what is it you're doing?
So it changed to every other month or as needed and it is what date? Is it the first Monday or is that BFC?
It would be the first Thursday of every.
Every month.
First or third of.
Of every month.
Of every month.
Every other month, yes, okay. Uh, did you catch that?
No.
Okay, so every other month or as needed and either the third or the fourth Thursday of those every other months.
The meetings start at five-thirty.
Five-thirty start time usually lasts a longer than an hour. Sounds like you might be interested.
Uh, it's not yet, I'm gonna head out, definitely.
All right, that's awesome. So it looks like we have a liaison, does everybody agree? You have consensus?
Sure.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right, anything else from other board members before we adjourn? Any topics of discussion? Yes, Jason.
I just wanted to announce that I'm stepping down from the board after Dr. Flansburgh. To concentrate on more of my teaching and also on my being Dr. Started and, and use some more time of all. I've been on the board for five years, but it's tumultuous sometimes and oftentimes arduous. And, and I actually think I'm at a place right now where I, I feel comfortable with the direction of the school, with the leadership of Dr. Flansburgh and his team. So I think it's time for me to concentrate both on my family and also on my teaching with teaching college class and Dr. Last year was a, it is as Christine probably watched where it's crap shooting, it's September, I ended up in the hospital anyways because I'm running a candle at all events. Usually every fall, last year was probably October when it hit me. When I realized that some of the test scores and reading comprehension was, was pretty low. And I think by the end of October, I was pretty burnt out. So I think, I think it's just best at this point to step down from the board because I think the school's in the right direction. And I am sorry I couldn't be there in person, but in mind of water, they let me back up to the cabin because the floor is on the floor that was ticking and mushrooms were not. So I, I am doing floor work today, which was pretty disgusting. But that's why I could be there, I'd rather have been my last meeting in person, unfortunately. Circumstances came up that let me even be manual labor, but it's looking good, so I got that going. Now tomorrow I gotta paint new trim, so. But, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for all the time I've spent down in the board. It's definitely been a rewarding experience.
Thank you, Tassie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I just wanna say when I started on the board, Jason was kind enough to nominate me as vice chair and then continuing to nominate me up. And he held that role previously as vice chair and I went to him a lot with a lot of questions. And he was a wealth of knowledge for anything that I needed and his attention to detail has been great. And I know even as the school has expanded and grown, Jason's had a huge, huge part in that. So I don't think we're, I don't think we'd be where we are today without the leadership that you've shown, both as a board member and a teacher, as a coach, all that. So thank you so much, definitely understand the, the reasoning and we're just excited for you to continue to pour into the students.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna try to make Jason cry?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I just wanted to let you know in case you don't see me next to me. I'll send you a formal letter of resignation so that it's legitimate and formal. But I just wanted to fill out a letter, but you know, it's probably like, where, I don't miss meetings, right? It's one of my things and so if I'm not here in September, you're, you're not wondering where that guy is, so.
Awesome. All right.
Growing moral mushrooms up at the cabin.
Yeah.
Actually, they were morals and it's funny because I got pictures of you.
No, I'm good, I appreciate, you know, I, I, I always say, you always think about me in the kindest ways, so thanks, Jason.
Jason, Anne pointed out a good point, looks more like you're in an interrogation room right now, you're not saying this under duress, are you?
I'm in, I'm in the camper right now, that's the good thing, the cabin does not. So that's where I am. It's, it's basement. I think this is on site, it's gonna be when you're working on.
All right, well, thank you for everything again.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from any other board members? If not, looking for a motion to adjourn, Jason, we gotta vote on this one.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do robo-co, roll call votes. If we go really slow, we'll, we'll keep, keep Jason for just a couple more seconds. Dr. Flansburgh, you're gonna call the vote.
Nicole. Chad.
Hi.
Jason Tassie.
Hi.
Amanda. Jason Bush.
Aye.
Nathan.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Anne.
Aye.
Danae.
Aye.
Nicole.
Aye.
Motion passes, we adjourn, thank you.